Morning, everyone. Like, okay, good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Mayor.
Wow. I know it's Monday, but it is a good morning. Okay, I'd like to call to order the Mayor Commission Work Session of April 26, 2021, and the local time is 10:03 a.m. We will start off, Item Number 1, 8111 RFP Selection Process Update. And Ms. Ferriello, you want to update us on where we are?
Yes, sir. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. You say "good morning," I say "good morning" with energy.
There you go. I hope you all had a great weekend. Again, Jennifer Ferriello, Director of Housing and Community Development. And I want to start just to indicate the purpose of this meeting. So the purpose of the meeting is just to provide you with the status update of where we are with the solicitation for 8111 South Dixie Highway. It's also an educational moment for our newly-elected Commissioner, Commissioner Warren, just to be brought up to speed in terms of what efforts have taken thus far. I want to preface my presentation by also saying that we will not be presenting any of the recommendations provided by any of the committee members. This is, we just want to get some feedback on you and how you'd like that process to be. And this is, we're making sure of that so we keep the integrity of the solicitation in place. Again, this is not the time where we will be reviewing those recommendations. A quick highlight of previous actions. The city purchased this property in 2012 for 2.9 million. Over the years, starting in 2012, we have undertaken various community engagement efforts to seek feedback from the community in terms of what they'd like to see on the existing site. Most recently, starting in August of last year, we held various virtual and in-person meetings to seek additional input for the site. As a result of those meetings, on October 5th, the City Commission determined that the property, declared the property as surplus, and authorized the city staff to move forward with developing a solicitation for an invitation to negotiate document. That document was provided to the City Commission on December 14th, and it was approved and authorized us to move forward with publishing the document and seeking solicitations from developers. A quick highlight of the project goals and objectives that were outlined in the invitation to negotiate. In essence, we were looking for a proposal that fulfilled the highest and best use for the site, that provided a robust mix of uses, including housing, commercial and retail, entertainment purposes, open space, and other cultural recreational activities, provided for economic impact, considered and incorporated the waterfront location of the property, created an architectural landmark in South Dixie Highway, provided a noticeable gateway to the city. We wanted a project that enhanced the city's south end's unique identity and sense of place, contributed to the overall quality and surrounding neighborhoods, incorporated art, considered redevelopment of the golf course, considered the potential redevelopment of the adjacent shopping center, and generated a return through the city through the purchase and/or lease of the price, I'm sorry, and/or lease in accordance with the price and/or new tax revenues that would be attributable to this project. One of the special considerations, or some of the special considerations and prefercences that were highlighted in the ITN was a project that incorporated connectivity to the C-151 Canal, a project that considered the adjacent shopping center known as Palm Coast Plaza. We wanted a project that complemented the South Dixie Highway, and a project that required a welcoming entrance monument to our city on the southeast corner of the lot. So that once the document was prepared and approved by the City Commission, it was made available through the procurement officials' website on December 16th. It was posted in the Palm Beach Post on December 20th, and we had a submittal deadline of Thursday, February 18th, 2021. We wanted to make sure that we gave the developers ample time to respond to the solicitation so that we were able to get an accurate picture of what it was that they were proposing. As a result of that, a total of nine solicitations were received, and I'm going to read out who those individuals or who those partners were. So it was Blue Way Partners, L&amp;M Development Partners, MS Squared, and Coconut Properties, Falcon and Associates LLC, and Arncore Capital Management, Flagler Realty and Development Inc., and Woodfield Development, Gilbain Development Company, Hyperion Group LLC, Marcus Equities, OAG Investments 4 LLC, aka Office America Group, RDG Development Group, and Grag Gerdona Partners LLC, and Related Development LLC. This is the Development Group out of Miami, not Development Companies that's founded by Stephen Ross. It's a different development. Group. So as indicated in the invitation to negotiate, the city established two review committees to review the proposals that were received. One of them was an internal review committee, which consisted of city staff, and those proposals were reviewed on March 26, 2021. We also put together a Citizens Review Committee, which consisted of seven members, and those individuals reviewed the proposals on March 30th, 2021. The Citizens Review Committee consisted of one resident from each of the commission districts as appointed by the commissioners, one south end resident of the city as elected by the mayor, and one business owner in the south end of the city as selected by the mayor. And both review committees ranked the proposals based on the following criteria. And again, I won't go through the details of what that entails. That will further be presented to you at an upcoming Special Commission Meeting. But they reviewed the proposals based on the project development concept and the consistency with the project goals. That was for a total of 21 points. Public benefits for up to 15 points. They reviewed what was proposed in terms of the waterfront location for up to 10 points, the developer qualifications for up to 25 points, economic benefits for up to 10 points, and the purchase terms and conditions for up to 15 points, for a total of 100 points. So this is where we're moving into the next process and where we will need some guidance from this governing body. We'll touch a little bit on that towards the end of the presentation. So the ranking of the committees will be presented to the City Commission at a Special Commission Meeting. That's what was outlined in the ITN, and that's the process that will be presented to you. We will work with city administration to determine the appropriate date to present that to you. At this Special Commission Meeting, and the primary purpose is for us to be able to present to you the proposals that were received, and where you would have the ability to elect up to six proposals and shortlist them. You may be able to select four, you may select three. It'll be at your discretion, but you have the ability to select up to six. One of the things to keep in mind that we will discuss at the end of this conversation or the end of this presentation is if you would like to review all of the nine proposals now before they are presented to you, or if you would like to wait to review the proposals after the shortlist rankings have been presented and after you have shortlisted the proposals. We can also provide you with the recordings from both of the Citizens Review and the Internal Review Meeting. Those were held via Zoom, and you would also be able to review those as well. So keep that in mind as we move forward with this presentation. I wanted to give the Commission just an idea in terms of what the thought process is and how the proposals will be presented to you. So what you see before you in this slide is just a sample of how I plan on presenting that to you. We'll have an area where we'll discuss project highlights. But before I move forward, I just want to say that this is not, this is just something I put together. This is not reflective of any one proposal. It's just to give you an idea of how they'll be presented. But we'll have, we'll discuss some of the project highlights, some of the key considerations that were brought forward in the proposal. We'll talk about some considerations, things that may or may not, that you may want to keep in the back of your mind as you make the selection. We'll provide some visuals so you have some visual understanding of what it is that they're proposing. And then we will also give you the total points for each of, for both the internal and the Citizens Review Committee. We'll give you the combined score and how they ranked. So we will do that for every single project, all of the nine proposals that were received. And then towards the end, we will kind of summarize all of it so you could see where they stand or where all of the developers stand in terms of their ranking, both with the city and with the internal, I'm sorry, and with the Citizens Review Committee. So we'll put all of that together, and that's the thought process in terms of presenting that to you. But keep that in mind so that we can further discuss this at the end of the presentation in case there's other items or other things that you would like for us to include as we present these proposals to you. So a list of what's ahead. So the next step would be to shortlist the proposals. We will put together a Special Commission Meeting in which you will review the committee rankings, and you will have the ability to shortlist up to six proposals. After you have shortlisted those proposals, they will be available online for survey by city residents in order for them to provide feedback. We will develop an online survey to ensure that we capture their comments and which proposal they'd like the most. We will host then, again, another Special Commission Meeting in which you will hear directly from the developers, and they will be presenting on their proposal. We will also provide you with a community feedback, and you will have the ability at that point to select up to three proposers for negotiations. And then you will direct city staff to move forward with negotiating the terms and conditions or other further direction depending on the results of our discussion. Just some built-in protections that I want to remind you of. The city is currently under no obligation to enter into a contract to sell its property. We reserve the right to cancel, reissue, or reissue the invitation, or withdraw it from consideration. You will have the ability to review the recommendations of the committees and shortlist the proposals. We have to provide you with, you have to provide us with the approval to negotiate, and we will have to bring back to you a draft term sheet and/or contract for you to review. And just as a reminder, we are unable to actually sell the property until we bring it back to you for two hearings, one of which has to be approved by a supermajority vote. So just want to keep that in mind that at any point in this process, we have the ability to withdraw for consideration the solicitations that were received. Final reminder, just to keep in mind, we are still under the cone of silence, so no individual is allowed to speak to either any of the individuals in this governing body or to city staff related on, you know, as it relates to this project, either in person by telephone or in writing or any other forms of communication. So this is in effect until we have a fully executed agreement with the selected developer. And that concludes my presentation, and I'll just go back to if we can revisit how you would like to move forward in terms of reviewing the proposals and if there's any additional formatting or any other considerations that we should discuss or that we should have available so when we present these proposals to you, you have the accurate information that you need to make a decision. So that concludes my presentation, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. I've got to go back. So I had heard that there was an issue with the RFP, I'm sorry, the ITN, in terms of the description of the acreage. There was a typo or something like that. Talk to us about that, and were any respondents disadvantaged because of our error? Had you heard this?
Yes, sir. We did, and that was initially discussed when we reviewed the rankings. And so the developers understand that they're only able to develop up to 210 units of housing on this specific property. So they understand that that's a consideration, that they will have to make adjustments to their project and their performance based on that. But I do want to add that although there was an error in the acreage, because that was the information that was in PAPA, so we took that information directly from PAPA, but we also provided the developers with a survey, and the survey had the actual acreage or number of acres that, you know, is encompassing of the project. So that error was just basically because we took it directly from PAPA.
So there is a discrepancy between the survey that was attached and the information on PAPA?
Correct.
Why didn't we just stop it and reissue the ITN so that everybody was working from the same information?
I'm going to ask the deputy city attorney to provide guidance on that.
That discrepancy wasn't known to us until after the proposals were submitted, and then developers, and it was at sort of at the, one of the initial review committees that one of the developers said, hey, there was a discrepancy. Did anybody realize that? We did not know that up to that point. And so far, no developer has actually said they had an issue with that or wanted to change their proposal or, so we have not actually had a developer come and say that there was a problem with that, they needed to change their proposal, or that there were going to be issues with that.
Well, again, out of an abundance of caution, whenever we found out that there was this discrepancy, out of an abundance of caution so that we could ensure that everyone's playing from the same, singing from the same page of the hymnal, why wouldn't we have just put the brakes on it, reissue the ITN with the correct information?
It wasn't determined to really be a significant discrepancy at the time. This is an invitation to negotiate, and the final terms of the projects are all going to be negotiated and probably won't be what's originally proposed anyway, but we certainly can do that now if we feel that's necessary. We can take that extra step and reissue for a short period of time and get revised proposals.
Well, here's the deal, okay? I mean, acreage affects what you're putting on the space. And if you feel that it is acreage X number of acres, your proposal, your presentation may be different than if you feel that's Y acres on the proposal. And what you present as part of your proposal is what goes to these election committees, and that's what they're considering. So if there is one party that figures there's more land based upon whether, I don't know if it's PAPA or whether it's a survey, and then they have more bells and whistles in their proposal as opposed to another party who figures that there's less land and less room for bells and whistles, it just leaves too much room for discrepancy, and I just don't understand why, when we saw the discrepancy, we wouldn't have just said, all right, you know, let's bring this to a halt so that everyone is playing from the same set of rules.
Mayor, I do, I get your point, but I also want to add that even if we did that, there were some developers that even if we provided the correct acreage and even if they looked at the survey, which in essence, they also probably should have looked at the survey in detail, there were developers that went above and beyond what would even have been allowed if we had that acreage of 6.97. So they added above and beyond bells and whistles, and that was provided to us, Mayor, and when they weren't even allowed to do that, even if the acreage was 6.93 as opposed to the 6.5 that was outlined in the survey. So I'm not-
I'm just talking about the purity of the process, all right? If we as a city are asking for proposals and within that invitation itself, there is an internal discrepancy as to the acreage, to me, that is a, whether it's five acres, whether it's .5 acres, that's a significant problem on our fault.
The process isn't like a bid where your proposal's hard and what comes in on this. It's an invitation to negotiate. So we were sort of looking at more in terms of the bigger picture of what the proposals are proposing and the mix of uses and how they use the waterway and what. Almost every single one of those proposals will have to be somewhat zoning changes that we don't know whether the zoning, you know, will be approved. Some are, a lot of, some include, you know, above and beyond what zoning allows, different density. So I don't know if there's any one that is just a perfect fit without any change based on the other. So it's kind of being looked at from the bigger picture of what are they proposing, and then when we decide we negotiate, we'll kind of narrow down and get to that because they're all just very different and unique looks, ideas for what's there for the community. So that's sort of what the approach is. This is what's sort of like the big picture and what are they proposing in general, and then we'll work through that as we, as we continue to, as we negotiate with those.
Again, I'm not concerned about the responses to the, I'm concerned about the fundamental accuracy of our ITN and how that, whether it does affect, doesn't affect. We didn't do our job, and once we found out that we had made a mistake, stop it and reissue the ITN.
We can do that.
All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Peduzzi.
Thank you, Mayor.
President Peduzzi, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Is there any way to, instead of just having to reissue the ITN, that you can simply contact all of those respondents and ask, you know, let them know formally of that discrepancy and ask them, you know, if it would fundamentally change their proposal just to save the time of not having to reissue the ITN entirely?
We did, you know.
Yes, I mean, we could ask them to resubmit their proposals based on the survey and make any revisions they want to their proposals based on the acreage and the survey.
Now, the other concern, I don't know if you had a follow-up, but that did raise a concern. Have they had access to the other proposals in the interim?
No.
All right.
Well, they've seen what's been presented at the public meetings, so they've seen the ideas that it presented by others at the public meetings.
And they also know, Mayor, they also understand our concerns in terms of what, in reviewing their application, what are some of the things that we looked at that we liked, some of the things that we probably needed to reevaluate. So all of the individuals who provided a response were at that meeting, and they were able to listen to all of those things. So should we reissue, they have the ability to tweak their entire proposal to fit what it is that both the city and the residents were looking for, so.
But everybody has that.
Everybody.
They would all be on the same page.
Yes.
Everybody has that. They're all working from the same page because they all know what the proper acreage is, and they can redo it. Okay. Do you have a follow-up? Okay. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. Do we open ourselves up for any liability issues that it wasn't correct, and if we didn't change it moving forward?
It's a, so listen to, it's an invitation to negotiate, so, I mean, we have the right to reissue, cancel, or do as we seem.
Right, but could one of the applicants maybe who didn't get shortlisted say, I didn't get shortlisted because of this discrepancy. I didn't put, as Mayor said, you know, all these extra bells and whistles in. And so would they have any standing to come back to the city in that we'd be liable for that mistake to them?
It's hard to say. We don't know what the reasons that they'd be shortlisted from. If you looked at the committee reviews, I think the decisions of the committee really had nothing to do with the density or what's on there, but we will reissue so, and allow so that we don't have that issue. We will have them updated based on the current survey, so we are going forward at, even everybody's on the same level playing field going forward.
Commissioner Shoff.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I certainly understand the mayor's concerns with the purity of the process, but I just also want to do a level set as far as information that was provided to each of the bidders so that we can make sure that we address those very legitimate concerns but keep this timetable moving forward. So every applicant or every submission to this process was given, in essence, the same misinformation. So they were given all the same fair playing field, and if anyone would have come back during that process and said, hey, there's a discrepancy here, there would have been an RFI that was issued, and all applicants would have been given the same information.
Right.
So in essence, everyone is given the same level playing field of, in this case, misinformation. So can you tell me what was the discrepancy? By how much? Are we talking acres and acres, or are we talking a negligible amount of land?
We're talking somewhere between a quarter of an acre and a third of an acre discrepancy.
And so, again, I think those are very legitimate concerns, especially if there's a liability on the other side. Would we be able to address that liability if we as a commission heard all nine of those proposals and gave those proposers the opportunity to clarify anything they would have done differently if they made one assumption or the other?
Yes. I mean, it's just a matter of whether you want to do that and let them do that first in writing so we have a solid proposal, or whether you just want them to do it at a presentation, but we should give all of them the same opportunity.
And I think to Mayor's point, it's a liability and purity of process, so not being the legal arm of this, I would say whatever we can do to keep the process moving forward, but still from a liability perspective, make sure that we've given every submitter the most accurate and equal information.
Again, I'm not sure that there's a real liability issue there. If the developer should be using the survey to make their plans, which was the correct information, there was a small description up front that had an incorrect number in it, but we will certainly let them update their proposals to match the.
Well, I don't, I don't like rushing. I'd much rather it be right, and I'm very concerned about the purity of this process. And my opinion is that we throw it out, we reissue the ITN to make sure that all of the information contained therein is correct. Don't know why that wasn't caught before. Be that as it may. Reissue it, let everybody respond based upon the accuracy of the information. I'm more concerned about us as a city getting this done properly and not trying to put Band-Aids on the pig afterwards or lipstick on the pig after the fact. No. Throw it out, start over, get it done right, let's see what comes in, and we'll take it from there. I mean, there's no particular, in my view, there's no particular time sensitivity involved here. We've owned this land for, since 2012. We haven't done anything with it. So if we're going to do something, let's get it done right, people.
Can I just, for clarification, do we just want a new update from the nine that proposed, or do we want to cancel and start all over for, so it's open to the world?
My view, cancel, start over.
Okay.
We didn't do it right the first time. Let's acknowledge our mistake, do it right this time, please.
Okay.
That's my view. I don't know if that requires a vote or not. Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. I agree with you, Mayor. I think if we're going to put it back out, we should put it back out entirely because it's, I'm not sure whether it would be a liability if there were other proposers that may have wanted to apply if they thought there was more space to work with or something like that. So I think if we're going to redo it, we should probably just put it out for everyone.
City Attorney, you want to weigh in?
Certainly, and I think that, you know, as it relates to litigation, the cleaner your process is, the less likely you are to have to address challenges. And certainly, as Commissioner Fox was indicating, if it's a potential, now they should have read all of the documents if they were going to propose.
We should have done it right, too.
But, yeah, you certainly clean up more if it's done all the way over and let everyone who might have proposed and didn't propose because of size, because they didn't do their homework, and because we had an error, you clean everything up. It's all fixed, so.
That's what I'm suggesting.
That's my recommendation as well.
Mr. President, and Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we've got to also keep in mind that we've got a Citizen Review Committee that's now going to be asked to re-review, not re-review, potentially review an entirely different set of proposals or additional proposals. If we could just make it as easy as possible on them, not require them to come into City Hall to pick up the packets, you know, have them deliver it to them, since they've already put, you know, a good amount of effort into it, I'd appreciate that.
Commissioner Lambert.
I'm still struggling with this, and I certainly want to get it right, but I'm struggling with all of the effort that has gone into it thus far, and I want to clarify two things. You haven't quite told us what acreage was listed on the survey, which acreage was listed on the ITN. I'm guessing by what you're talking about that the survey has more land than was indicated on the ITN?
It's the other way around. So the ITN had, I believe, 6.97. That's what was outlined in PAPA, and the survey had a lower amount. We'll look into that.
6.51.
6.51 versus 6.97.
And so, in essence, all of the proposals, if, like, if they were following the ITN, they would have actually supplied more bells and whistles than if it were the smaller amount. So it's almost like they, they may have over-proposed.
The majority thing, the, as it relates to acreage, it's mostly due to how many units of housing they are allowed to develop. And Rick can further talk about that as it really, because it's related to planning and zoning, but it's mostly about can you build 210 units or can you build 215 units? I don't know exactly what that number is, but Rick can further look to it.
Listen, people, we didn't do it right, okay? So we're trying to fit this round hole into a square peg, or a square peg into a round hole, whatever it is, forgive my misuse of metaphors. The bottom line is, we didn't- misuse of metaphors. The bottom line is, we didn't do it right. I'm surprised, quite frankly, that I didn't have a staff person come to me and say, "Mayor, we didn't do it right. What should we do now?" This is the first time we've had this conversation. And it disappoints me as staff that you didn't bring this to my attention as a CEO of this city. I shouldn't have to find this stuff out. Someone should bring it to me and say, "This is what we did wrong. What should we do now?" No, instead, you tried to cover it up. That makes me very unhappy. So, my suggestion is, again, let's get it right. Get the information out to everybody. If we've got to make it easier on the citizens' tab, what, you know, but let us not proceed down this path when we know we screwed up. Commissioner Lambert, did you have a follow-up?
Just when we talked about purity of the process, I guess, it really doesn't, my concern was, are we now muddying the waters because the proposers will have seen the other proposals? But I guess, you know, maybe that just makes their second proposal even better. You know, that was my concern, was maybe we were not having purity of process there. But I don't know that that's a negative thing for the city, so.
It's a consequence of our error, whatever it is. It's a consequence of our error internally. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think to my colleagues on the dais here and to the mayor, everyone wants to see this project move forward and move forward as quickly as possible. We want to see the process pure. The mayor is the CEO of the city, and it is his process that moves this forward as far as an ITN moving forward or canceling it at any time. And so, I think we've heard very clearly where the mayor stands on this today. And the one thing I would ask as 1/50 of this dais that will be looking at this down the line is that we just, again, go do the process right, but keep it moving in a forward direction as much as we can. Not to rush into it, but just keep that cadence moving forward because I do know this is something that the South End neighborhoods and the entire city of West Palm Beach have been asking for, for a long time. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Is this something that requires a vote?
You can certainly vote on it, but I think we've heard your direction loud and clear. Voting would make it a formal action.
Well, we can't take formal action here because this is not, this is a workshop.
That's correct. Then you should not vote.
My suggestion is, maybe we could reach a consensus, is that you throw the thing out, start over, and get it done right, please. Does anyone disagree with that? Okay, that's the instruction.
You got it.
Okay, 1909 project update. Mr. Ruge, Rebecca De La Rosa.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners and City Administrator. Rebecca De La Rosa.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, good morning. This morning, well, Rebecca De La Rosa, Chief of Staff and Economic Development Director. This morning, I have with me Shayna Ostrvitz, 1909 Executive Director, Chris Ruge, CRA Executive Director, and my mentor, of course, along with Saeda Florax, founder and grant graduate. Her company's name is Emancio. We want to also give a special thank you to Beth Wegmeister, our ASL interpreter for today. The purpose of this work session is to provide you with an overview of the 1909 Community Gamification Program, which was adopted by the commission in February of 2020, as well as results from Phase One, the return on investment from the city grant, and get direction from you on moving forward with an agenda item set for May 3 to formally approve agreement for Phase Two. Before Shayna presents an overview of the program, I've created a short timeline that reflects the city's commitment to our entrepreneurs and economic development. In December of 2018, the city adopted this latest strategic plan. In Pillar Four of the strategic plan, it reads, "Promote an economic development plan with emphasis on business expansion, diversity, and retention." Not only will the results of the Community Gamification Program reflect business expansion for various ideas, but it will also reflect your desire and community's desire to see diversity in minority-owned and women-owned businesses. Next, to further the city's commitment, on January 14, 2019, Resolution 1519 approved incentives to 1909 for an accelerator program providing entrepreneurial and business startup training to businesses and authorizing a grant agreement. Soon after, receiving direction from you in the strategic plan in January of 2020, the Economic Development Plan was adopted and included Goal Five, Innovation and Entrepreneurship, which reads, "Continue to support and add entrepreneurial innovation events in the city in partnership with groups like 1909, South Florida Science Center, and universities." While this is the last bullet, it certainly is not the last project or endeavor by the city in promoting economic development, thanks to Chris Ruge. Lastly, on February 20, 2020, Resolution 3820 approved a grant for 1909 to create a Community Gamification Program. We will now play a short video for you, and then Shayna will present the overview of the program, results, return on investment, and the future of the program.
It's CoLab Weekend in 1909, and we got our entire accelerator here. I've been working with these businesses for six months, and they've all made so much progress. But I know that when we surround them with a team of people who are just really good at a few things, we are going to make enormous strides in a single weekend.
My experience this weekend was nothing short of amazing. I met so many incredible people and so inspired by all the work that was created and all the companies that have been started.
Me, like, it was just so inspiring, like, meeting everyone and actually building up the entire company, like, by scratch this weekend. It was really cool.
This weekend forced me to build something very quickly to validate the long-term business idea, something that would take me nine months to do on my own. I literally did in less than 24 hours. So, incredibly blessed for that.
We are 100% ready to launch the app onto the iOS and Android stores. And surprisingly, three out of the five team members potentially could stay on and join the team as actually permanent team members. That's super, super exciting.
My weekend was, oof, intense. That's the best word. It was intense. It was magical. It was grueling.
And the DNA of community and empowerment and helping each other has been, it's been created, so it's only going to get better. And these CoLab days are going to grow, and we're going to have some amazing companies come out of the accelerator.
I'm just floored and honored to be amongst such amazing individuals. Everybody here has a business that is going to change lives, not just, like, for themselves, but for communities and people around them.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good morning.
It's been, you know, over a year since we approved the grant to facilitate this program for entrepreneurs in our community. I'm very excited to be back here sharing with you today. I've shared with most of you the results, but I want to cover it again as well as introduce one of the founders that went through that program to truly understand the innovation that's coming out of our communities and out of these programs, because it's really much bigger than me. It's really much bigger than 1909. It is all of the founders that we serve in this community and the amazing innovations that they're creating. So, to go through the 2020 report, this is, again, covering the program that we offered last year. A quick review of the program itself. So, in partnership with the city and with your support, we offered a six-month Business Accelerator and Gamification Program designed to help the founders in our community develop their ideas into successful businesses. We launched that program in June of 2020, and it was completed, and our participants graduated in December. We did all of it, minus a few of our programs, virtually, of course, because of COVID. That was a big shift for us. But thankfully, we were able to have incredible engagement, incredible founders, and great results. So, after receiving over 65 applications from founders in our community, we accepted 15 of the businesses. There were 20 founders that are part of that because some of them do have co-founders. It was a majority-minority program, so we had over 60% of the participants of race and ethnic minority backgrounds, as well as over 51% were women. We also had a very diverse industry coverage, which is important to us to make sure that we are supporting businesses of all different types in this community, including tech, marketing, apparel, wellness, food, you name it. And this was, of course, the first year we used the 1909 Community Gamification Platform, which is really the underlying tool that we use to help these founders move their ideas forward in a way that we believe is much more efficient and much more fun. So, just to give you a little bit of background of what the program includes, we have curriculum, which is helping the founders learn all the different foundational areas of business, as well as one of the most important pieces, which is habit building and process building for their business. So, ideas change, obviously, external factors change. We saw that very clearly in 2020. Founders and business owners have to understand how to adapt, how to continue to manage their businesses to move forward. And so, that's a heavy piece of what we teach them. They have accountability groups. They're doing homework. So, again, they're on the field. They're actually talking to customers. They're building financial models. They're building their marketing campaigns. It is not a theoretical program. It is an inaction program. They have mentors that we bring in from the community. We had, I believe, over 35 mentors, I'll go into that, who came in and helped them learn everything from communication strategy to IP protection. And then, we had our CoLab Days. The video that you just saw was the culmination of the program. And those founders that did extremely well in the gamification program essentially got teams to move their businesses forward. This is a beautiful view of our founders. Again, we have one of them here today, but I just want to make sure that we get to see their faces and just remember that, again, it's much bigger than me and my organization, that there are amazing founders out in our community that we are working with to help them bring their ideas to life. So, again, one of our major focuses was diversity in this program, making sure we're providing opportunities for all the founders in our community. I'm really proud of how this program turned out. And one of the reasons, I'm not going to read them all to you, but is, as we do evaluations throughout the program, many of the founders specifically said, without being prompted, how grateful they were that they got to see different faces in the program, that they felt safe, that they felt like it was an inclusive space to build their businesses. And so, that is very, very important to make sure we're providing that type of space and community for these founders to succeed. So, again, just to cover quickly, what is gamification? So, gamification is the application of game mechanics into non-game activities and processes. It is a proven powerful strategy for engaging, influencing, and motivating diverse groups of people. So, what did we do with this concept of gamification? So, our real purpose was to enhance the engagement, collaboration, and improve our accelerator's participants' ability to progress in their entrepreneurial endeavors. So, I know I've said before, but I'll say it again, you know, entrepreneurship is a very grueling, hard, long process where you don't see results for a very long time. Most founders hit burnout. They, you know, hear no all the time. There, it's an uphill battle. And so, that is really what the purpose of this gamification is. It's to help them move through the process while they're learning, building habits, to see the achievements they're making, to understand that they are making progress, where they can do better, to help them, because that's really our goal. We want them to succeed. We don't want them to have an uphill battle. Some people think it's a really glamorous idea that people have to, like, fight to make it. But really, what we want to do is provide opportunity and remove some of those barriers that the founders in our community have to be successful. So, what were the results? I'm very proud to say that with the $25,000 grant, we were able to accomplish many things in this program. 14, 15 companies graduated from the program, and I have an asterisk, I show that again. One of the founders joined another company in the program. 100% of the founders increased their knowledge and confidence in the foundational areas of entrepreneurship and business. And that is the chart you see to the right, where the light blue is the average before the course, the dark blue is after. Over $150,000 of work and services were completed for the participants during our CoLab event. So, again, going back to the video that you saw, one of the barriers entrepreneurs face is that they don't have the funds they need to build the products that they're trying to build, to do, you know, the photography that they need, to have the copywriting that they need. There's so many things that they have to do, and oftentimes, money is a barrier. And so, we want to make it more equitable for everyone, and that is part of these programs, is making sure they get services available to them. So, with that, we had nine apps and websites launched during the program. Over $150,000 in capital was raised by the companies during the program. 100% of all the launch companies saw their revenue increase during the program of approximately $200,000. And the companies added 16 new team members to their companies during the program. So, again, as you saw in the video, Adrian mentioned that a few of the people who worked on his team joined him. We saw a great amount of that, of helping these founders connect to the talent they need to move their businesses forward. And then, going back to the mentorship, as I mentioned, we bring in experts from all over the community to support these founders in areas of need. We had approximately 270 hours calculated of mentoring support. And the top support areas requested, which is, again, just important for us to know and why these platforms are so important, because we can actually track and get data we need to make sure that we're offering the proper services and support. So, communication and messaging is very important. Most of our founders have excellent ideas. They don't actually know how to share what those ideas are with the world. Technology development strategy, so that's not even just the actual development. It's what is the strategy of building whatever they're trying to build. That can really hurt or help founders. They need to understand what the process is, what the timeline is, how to manage developers, how to manage the funds with that. That's where a lot of founders get in trouble. So, having them have a support and someone who's an expert at managing that strategy is incredibly valuable. We also had a lot of requests for IP guidance. So, again, as founders are developing new technology innovation, they want to understand how to protect it. Saeda has several patents, actually, on her software and hardware. And so, we want to make sure that our founders are getting the support they need to protect the innovation they're working on. So, again, the CoLab Weekend, that was the end of the gamification program. So, what happened is, as the founders went through the program, they got points from everything, from coming to class, which is very important, and meeting with their mentors, to doing their homework, as well as they were able to get caramel points from their fellow peers for helping each other out or doing something really great. And then, over at the end of the program, those that had the top points, they essentially got to draft skilled volunteers to work on their businesses. And again, that video was just showing what that was. We had 65 skilled volunteers everywhere, from senior developers to graphic designers to videographers, come out. And they completed over $100,000 of work for our participants that day to move their businesses forward. So, I think you heard one of the participants say, what would have taken him six months to complete was completed through that project. So, think about what, how much that business was expedited by being able to be a part of that work during those points to get that work done. We also do a good amount to make sure that our participants are getting press and coverage. Again, we want to give them the opportunity to move their businesses forward that we know we can do as a collective, and they might not be able to do as an individual. We had several of our founders featured in local news as well as national news. So, ROI from the city grant, again, $50,000 of work was completed. Our midway CoLab, $100,000 at our end-of-program CoLab, over $150,000 in capital raised, revenue generated over $200,000. Team growth, we had 16 employees added to the businesses, approximately $30,000 of support for mentorship hours. So, again, that's what would have had to be paid for that type of expertise for their businesses, and immediate value for founders of over $50,000. So, approximately 20x return. And I am really proud of this. I think, you know, considering everything that was going on, it's incredible program. But these numbers, I also don't think do justice to the real impact. And that is why I've invited Saeda here and why I have some of the testimonials, because at the end of the day, these efforts are moving incredible businesses forward. They're moving incredible innovations. They are bringing our community to the top when it comes to technology, to innovation, to solving big world problems. to solving big world problems. Um, and so I am going to invite Saeda up here, uh, to share a little bit about her company, which is called Emonico. It is, uh, a software and hardware for people who are deaf and hard of hearing. She is going to change the lives of millions of people in this world by what she is building. I watched her through the process, she was told multiple times, no, don't build this software, there's already technology out there. Um, and she will probably go over this, but the technology out there essentially is translation apps where if every single one of us was talking, it would just be a stream of words. She would have no idea who's speaking, she would have no idea where it's coming from, it would all just be a stream of words. She is actually building a technology to distinguish different voices and highlight who is speaking and who is saying what. This has become an even bigger priority in the world because of COVID and because of everyone wearing masks. So she, like many other people, reads lips, but the second we put masks on, she actually has no idea what anyone is saying and needs additional, again, translation services, which are not built to serve properly. So she is solving a huge problem, she does not take no for an answer, which I love. She continued to build in our collab day, uh, she actually had a couple senior developers hop on and be, start building out that app, which we actually got to see in real time and is working out distinguishing different voices. Um, again, I think this is going to revolutionize that industry. She's had several offers for investors who want to come in. Um, so yes, this is what the work's all about. I'm going to invite Saeda to share a little bit about Emonico and about her experience in the program.
Thank you, Shayna, thank you for saying amazing word about me. Um, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you for having me. Uh, my name is Saeda, and I am the founder of I'm a Mancom, it's a technology company that create devices for people who are deaf and hard of hearing, like me with communication. And I came up with the idea back when I was a student at Palm Bay State College. And it was in two thousand seventeen, actually. Um, when I came up with the idea, no one thought I would be very serious about the product that I wanted to develop. And I didn't know who to reach out to, where to find the resources that I needed to build the product. And so I did find a path in the twenties, you wanted to help me follow for a path and, and I did that. And after a few months of working on it, I decided to put it on hold because I didn't know where to find the resources. I didn't know how to find money. A lot of engineers were telling me this would cost me millions of dollars to develop, but I wanted to do, and they were telling me to find a job somewhere or, um, focus on my education. And then after I graduated, I did my, my undergraduate degree and I decided to go to London. And I also didn't have the resources there as well. And I remember my professor told me about nineteen oh nine and other activated I could join. And after I graduated, I joined in nineteen oh nine accelerator. And then a few months after graduating, the pandemic hit. I had to work for the schools that had a substitute teacher and I lost my job. And I couldn't work because everyone was doing Facebook. And so I decided to apply to nineteen oh nine. And, um, the program definitely changed in my life, it helped me with grow personally and professionally. Um, so with that app, what I mean by like, I contacted a lot of engineers, I went to forty-five companies. I even contacted MIT, um, large university authors about, you know, we're going to find engineers, um, resources to help me develop this. And they told me that I have to build an algorithm. And, um, during the nineteen oh nine collab day, my mind was blue completely. Um, I couldn't imagine, you know, how I was able to find people who came out there. I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional. Um, I couldn't imagine how those people came out on a Saturday, you know, to help me develop my product. And they did it in six point five hours. And something I've been trying to build since two thousand seventeen and I couldn't do it. Um, it was tough, it was hard. Um, so I was very lucky, you know, I found this group of people who I could better help me. Didn't even, they also helped me with my app development, build a website. Um, they helped me with other, in other ways, as well. Um, I'm very grateful that they are a opportunity to be there. And this program opened so many doors for me. A lot of people, you know, a lot of people reaching out to me, those people that I've been reaching out in the past. And I told them, you know, I wanted this, I needed help with that. So I like, I didn't know that you were serious about this, you know. And it definitely changed in my life and, uh, being featured on national news and, and other local magazine and all stuff. And a lot of people actually are inviting me to speak at charge, at such event, some university are reaching out to me as well. And I was like, wow, and I'm here today. So I never thought one day it would be speaking during a touch event. Um, so I'm very grateful. And thank you so much for supporting organization nineteen oh nine and, um, thank you Shayna and the entire nineteen oh nine community for, um, making an impact in my life for helping me. Thank you.
That is incredible.
I don't know if anyone has questions for Saeda before she sits down.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Where are you from?
Um, my family is on P D. Well, I'm a teenager, but I'm sorry, and I'm from.
Uh, we're going to claim you in West Palm Beach.
She lives, yeah, she's in West Palm now.
I'm going to claim you.
Yes, right? So, um, again, Saeda's a remarkable human being. And, and you know, as I said earlier, entrepreneurship is hard and that's been glamorized for a long time. And our job here in this community is to take down the barriers for people like Saeda to build the innovations that are going to change this world. As she said, she's been told, know a lot of times, developers were going to charge her millions of dollars to bring this technology to life. And we have, you know, created an opportunity where it doesn't have to be that way. And she actually gets to get this out into the world in a time when people really need it. Um, it's called communify, by the way, so I'll make sure you all can, uh, get access to, um, the website. But it's pretty incredible to see, we have so many stories like that. Um, and, you know, I'm really proud to just be a part of her journey and the other journeys of founders in this community that are doing really exceptional things. So I'm not going to read all of these, but we had so much feedback, um, you know, that was similar, just saying, you know, how great this program was to take their business to the next level. The curriculum is uniquely designed through gamification while inspiring new perspectives through the journey. Um, you know, having tried entrepreneurship and a tech startup on my own and now having gone through the nine to nine accelerator, I can say with a hundred percent certainty that it's a massive advantage. Um, you know, it's not just a community, it's a family of people who are ambitious and kind in nature, um, and really helping people move forward. And, and that's what we're trying to create and have created, um, for the founders so far. So again, we always want to make sure that we're doing our job well, we continue to improve, we do survey all of our participants, uh, before and after the program. Uh, these were our scores, which, you know, I'm very happy with, I will hope that they're all five next time, that is what I'm always shooting for. So make sure we're doing our best, um, you know, from a course to facilitation, to the gamification, other participants, mentors and accountability groups. We're always looking at the different areas to understand where we can offer more and help these founders move forward. So the future, do you want me to keep going? Okay, so what are we planning to do next? Uh, again, we are really excited with the results so far, we want to continue to move this forward. So there's really two parts of this next phase. The first one is to continue with accelerator cohorts to expand and improve the gamification platform. Elements of that is, uh, taking what we learned in this past, uh, year to improve some of the communications within the platform. So our peer, our, um, participants can communicate peer-to-peer more easily and share resources more easily, um, improve the dynamic data for participants, so making sure that they can see all of the metrics that are important to them. We track certain metrics, but there are some that they have said are really important, such as customer interviews, um, certain types of sales, things like that, that we want to add in. Um, expanding our admin tools to make sure that we can adapt for programs, uh, gain year-over-year tracking. That is really important to understand how we're doing year-over-year, um, and capture trends for priorities for the future. So the second part of this next phase is to continue to work with our alumni companies like Saeda and the other participants that were in the two thousand and twenty program, uh, to help them continue moving forward. So, you know, they say in entrepreneurship, there are kind of two phases, zero to one, which is a very, very long time, going from nothing to, you know, considering first customer, which means you've done the build-out, the experimentation, you have a business. And then there's one to ten. So, you know, our two thousand and twenty participants are now in the one to ten phase where it's time for growth, expansion, investment, you name it. We want to make sure we continue to help them through that process. They're not, you know, all of a sudden ready to be, you know, the next Forbes, um, featured founder. So we want to make sure we don't lose the momentum they've gained and education they've gained. So keeping that momentum moving forward, making sure we're building connections between our alumni participants and new participants. Having those connections, it's why entrepreneurial communities do well, is when you have enough people in the same space sharing resources, knowledge and opportunity. Uh, we want to improve the opportunity for the businesses to earn revenue, um, and funding. So that's a big piece of what we believe as a organization we can help with. Um, and then keep the companies local and help them find talent here. So we want to make sure as they do continue to grow, that they get plugged into the resources they need and feel that they can grow their businesses here. Um, and help them capitalize on the new investment coming into South Florida. So we've seen a lot of that, we know that there is more money, more investment coming down here. They are looking at organizations like ours to find vetted, uh, founders with great innovation. So we want to make sure that we're providing that network and that connection, um, to the companies here in West Palm Beach. So, uh, we are asking to, for a two-year commitment to continue to develop the tool and program. Uh, and that's because our goal is to provide at least three years of support and data for this program to optimize our ability to support founders from zero all the way to ten. Um, and that again, will give us the opportunity to work with these founders for a long enough period of time to really see their businesses to success and to help them move forward. Um, so this just really goes into more detail, I'm happy to answer questions about this, I know there's a lot on here. But, um, again, based on the results, we want to continue to improve upon the program and system. So there's a lot of automation that goes into this, um, implementation of certain badges and, um, founders achieving milestones, getting recognition for that, um, we are going to add in different achievement feeds and challenge feeds. Again, just making it more dynamic, so our participants constantly, especially those who are out of the, you know, very intensive program, continue to get that action and activity and connection they need. Um, allow the participants to connect and schedule meetings with mentors. Uh, we have that already, but it definitely needs improvement because as you can imagine, scheduling appointments is sometimes the hardest thing founders, uh, have to do and getting that right. So we want to make sure again, we're making, uh, that easier for people. Um, now messaging, improve our logistics around collab days. And as I mentioned before, new metric tracking, so that includes client contacts, new sales, revenue increase and weekly goals achieved. And then again, we want to improve some of our admin functionality. A big piece of this as well is that, you know, we want to make sure that anything we're building right now has long-term value and impact. The more that we, you know, develop this to have more admin capabilities, more user capabilities, the more we're able to take this and utilize it for other, um, neighborhoods, for other organizations. We can share what we've been able to learn, um, with others who want to and need to use this. And that can only be done if we build in, uh, the admin capability so that someone can actually manage this type of tool and program without having, you know, a high-end developer oversee it or one of us have to oversee it. And then again, building in the opportunity for the alumni program, uh, and helping the graduates again, go from one to ten. So that's going to be the year-over-year tracking, helping them capture, helping us capture the trends and priorities to keep, keeping their momentum focused, uh, improve their opportunities for revenue growth. Uh, again, making those connections, so having a whole dashboard of the companies that are fundraising. We get asked that a lot from investors, making sure that we have it visible to them, that they can see which businesses here are open to investment or looking for investment, so they can start making those connections. And, um, again, trying to help them connect with talent. So we've already started working with PBA, um, to set up an intern program where essentially the, uh, companies and our participants post internships that they need help with. So for example, they may need somebody to come in and help them establish social media presence. So they'll get an intern from PBA to come in and help them do that. And again, we can be a great facilitator for that, uh, through the platform. And that is it for me. Do you all have questions?
Um. Not a, not a question, but, but a comment. Uh, first of all, congratulations, uh, I, I think you have done a tremendous job. And I remember when we first, uh, when you first, Chris Ruge first brought you in and said you won a twenty-five thousand dollars for this. Um, but the one thing I insisted upon is that this not, that, that, that you had diversity. Um, that it just not be another, uh, program, uh, for, uh, white males. Uh, when you think of tech, uh, that's typically what the demographics are. And I did not want West Palm Beach to participate in anything like that. And you were true to your word and the numbers speak for themselves. And, and, and commissioners, uh, you, you should be very proud of those who were on the dais at the time. And Commissioner Warren will let you share in the pride, um, for participating in this. Uh, be, because one of the things that I've learned, uh, during, during the short tenure time at, at being mayor, one of the most successful strategies for economic development, uh, for cities is to develop a, a, a vibrant, strong entrepreneurial ecosystem. Um, entrepreneurs, uh, do not come, uh, the, the, the innovation, the, um, energy that is required for entrepreneurs to succeed does not know a zip code, uh, it does not know a skin color. Um, people either have it or they don't, uh, in terms of being successful as entrepreneurs. And so it is so important to me in this city, uh, that we do begin to build out a, uh, vibrant, uh, entrepreneurial ecosystem, uh, so that, uh, entrepreneurs from any neighborhood in our city, uh, can find their way to success. You all have heard me say that I want West Palm Beach to be a community of opportunity for all. Well, this is a big step in that direction. So, uh, kudos, uh, to, uh, nineteen oh nine. I think that is, that it, it, it could be a tremendous building block in this entrepreneurial ecosystem, which I think will lead to tremendous, uh, um, economic development opportunities throughout our city. Uh, questions, comments, Commissioner Shof?
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you all too. I want to say I, I see this as a group, you know, success story because we can't do it without all your support and, and seeing the opportunity that, you know, is created by programs like this, so, thank you.
So thank you very much, Mayor, and, and thank you very much Shayna for coming out. And congratulations to Saeda, uh, great, great program, great success story. Um, you know, and, and to the mayor's point, we were highly focused on making sure that there was a concentration of diversity and West Palm Beach participants here. Could you talk a little bit about where you get your participants? So how do you advertise for participants? And how do we ensure that they are West Palm Beach-based businesses? Um, and, and staff may be able to speak to this a little bit more if maybe perhaps the goal is not technically zip code city of West Palm Beach businesses, but could be located here in West Palm Beach. So if you could just give me some insights into that, please.
Absolutely. Yeah, so this past year, we did, um, you know, the majority of outreach, uh, digitally, especially because we were just hitting a time of COVID. So usually we do do events, um, and we try to go out into the community and present, you know, what we're doing to chambers and, um, different organizations. Most of it was done digitally, so through newsletters, social media, LinkedIn. Um, we did ask people to do individual invites to anyone that they knew who, um, may have an interesting business. We also connected to the universities to get the word out. Um, definitely this year, you know, as we move forward, if we continue to move forward, my goal is to, uh, plug in more to different communities. I know Commissioner Lambert had mentioned, you know, the Latin Quarter and different, um, places to plug in to make sure we are getting the word out. Um, also making sure now if we can come to public, uh, in-person events as well as doing, you know, mailers, uh, you know, just to make sure people are getting the information, I think that's really important. The other thing is I think having nineteen oh nine have the workspace, all of the accelerator participants are able to come in twenty-four seven, they have access to internet. They have a printer, they have whiteboards, they can have meetings in the space, they can have conference rooms. So that's definitely a way too, where we want to ensure that the activity is happening in West Palm because all the founders are essentially, they are, that is actually part of our application process is that they need to be, uh, based in West Palm, but they work out of the city right downtown. So that's important too, is that they're bringing other people that they're meeting with, clients. Um, they're working and hiring people and, you know, they really call nineteen oh nine our space home. So, you know, we want to continue. So, you know, we want to continue to make that a hub where those resources are available. And again, they don't have issues because they don't have internet or they don't have issues because they don't have a printer available. Little things like that can make or break, you know, an opportunity for a business. If they need to go print out a presentation, you know, to go meet with an investor. It's not this big hurdle of trying to find somewhere that's open and pay for printing, right? They just walk into our doors any time of day. They can come at four in the morning if they want and print out that presentation to get ready. So that's a big piece, I think, of what helps create that energy here in the city.
And Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
And thank you for that. And I think that's a big hurdle to entrepreneurship. As we go forward, I think one of the things I'm always very mindful of are closed circles. So you have a program that's very tailored to a sector that's working very well for a tech sector. And naturally, the applicants are going to come from PBA, from an educational opportunity and background. And what I'm, what I'm trying to do is capture those concentric circles of where do we tap into another resource that can bring people in the door that wouldn't already know about your program? You know, I think you have some great resources to get some good talent. And hopefully, I think we're going to go into this next with staff too to address other areas of the spectrum of entrepreneurship and development. I think your program addresses, you know, you mentioned the zero to one, one to 10. We have businesses that are at that zero to one that have been in the city for a long time. But maybe, you know, for instance, I have a dog walker within my district that doesn't know how to online bank. This program is not tailored to that kind of business owner, but that kind of business owner has been successful and could use some acceleration as well. So the more we can kind of tap in and keep all of those chains connected, I think the better off we will be on the program. And if there's at any point a place where I can be helpful in trying to connect some of those resources. You know, a lot of times it's just about making that introduction to a great pool of people that are already kind of working, working in teams. And so that way we can all work together at it. But certainly a great effort and an awesome program that's producing some really great results for our businesses. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I wanted to say congratulations and thank you to Saeda as well.
Your mic on.
Thank you.
Apologize. And to you for the program. Thank you. Is, was this program only for technology-based companies?
No, it was not. Yeah, we had several technologies, but we also had some that were not technology-based companies. We had a coffee company. We had an apparel company. We had a company that did some health and wellness programming. So yeah, across the board.
Okay. And the reason I ask is, and I don't know if this is the coffee company that was in your program or not, but I was recently contacted by an entrepreneur, two, you know, small business owners, entrepreneurial group who worked out of 1909, who now have brick and mortar in the south end of West Palm Beach. And they actually had a lot of questions about, you know, building and architecture and what they need to do. And I just didn't know if your program will help address that or if that's something you look to for the city to help guide. And I don't know if the city already has programs in that area, but I, I think that the companies that are looking to move into a physical space might need some assistance there as well.
Yeah, absolutely. I think you're talking about Candid Coffee?
Composition Coffee.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, and that is one of the reasons why we've really decided that we do want to focus on this alumni group as well. Because we do know, it's very exciting to see a company grow and say, okay, now I need a brick and mortar location. You know, but right now we've really just been focused on programming for, you know, kind of getting them there. So adding on that additional effort to work with them, you know, to work with the city to help find, you know, the resources for locations like that is something that, you know, I would really like to take on. That's something too, I think, is navigating the system is a way that we can partner together even more is, you know, 1909 as well as the city and other resources and, you know, services within the city so we can make sure that everyone, you know, gets access to what they need. So yes, that is a big need actually that we have not addressed yet, and that's exactly what we kind of want to do moving forward.
Commissioner, I would also encourage you to have them contact Mr. Hayden with our Department of Economic Opportunity. He's aware of a number of resources throughout the city that could address their questions and certainly point them in the right direction.
May I?
Yes, absolutely.
And I think to that point, I think they didn't know about Frank Hayden in that department. So I don't know if that's something that you can share with your small business owners that, hey, there is an office here in the city that can help them with that. That would be great.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think that's something too that, you know, as we continue to build out, I'd love to have that list of resources available to them, you know, within the platform as well so they know exactly where to go. And we can help make that connection directly.
We'll make sure Rebecca gets that information over to you.
Great, thank you.
Any other, yeah, Commissioner Fox?
Thank you and congratulations to you. Congratulations to Saeda. This is a fantastic program. I think I was a small business owner myself, and I think one of the hardest things about being an entrepreneur is not having the resources to anyone to bounce ideas off of and to just have that camaraderie. So I think it's so fantastic. I wanted to ask you one question about, there was a slide that you had on the screen about the reviews from the participants. And most of them were fives. One of the categories was the gamification experience had a 4.1, which is a little bit lower than the other categories. I was curious if there was more detail about that or if people were just giving a number score or if they had expanded as to, you know, what were the things that they would have liked to have seen that maybe they weren't experiencing?
Yes, great question. Thank you for asking that. I kind of skipped over that score to the next phase, but those are connected. So essentially, a lot of the feedback that we did hear was that there were just things that they would have liked to do within the gamification program that they could not. So there was opportunity for them to give feedback to one another in the gamification program, but they weren't able to send messages. They weren't actually able to get some of those dynamic results in the moment. So they said, you know, it would have been really helpful for them to see some of that feedback more quickly, to be able to communicate within the platform with one another, especially because, you know, they were virtual. And we will probably continue to be hybrid for a while moving forward. And so they don't get always that face-to-face interaction. So having that opportunity to communicate with one another was really important. And then the other piece was some of the metrics that they wanted to track. So they started to see, oh my gosh, this is great. This is helping hold me accountable. I get to see how I'm doing in certain areas. And so it was one of those things as well where it was, you know, I'd like to track more. I'd like to see my progress in more areas and use this in a way that's more valuable for me. So even the goal tracking, so they, you know, what we've looked at is they set their goals in the beginning of the week and they actually get to check each of those off. So those are some, you know, of the dynamic components of the software we didn't have this past year that we really want to add in.
Very good. Any other questions? So I don't know if we cut you off if you want to continue with your presentation. But they asked if we had questions, so we jumped in there.
Yes, sorry about that.
Thank you, Mayor. We were grateful for the feedback. And I think that this next slide is really just anticipation. Thanks to the Office of Equal Opportunity, they were able to provide us with some additional information over the last year on what they have had some successes on. What they have had some successes on. Thank you. And in addition to that, what they plan to come in front of you for potentially in May. So thank you again, Shayna. Thank you, Saeda. Before we provide a summary, staff recommendation, and hear from you, we would also like to address some of the programs and the separation, the difference between the SBE and the M W B E, which also addresses a broader range of entrepreneurs in the community with different levels of experience. Thanks to the Office of Equal Opportunity, the Small Business Program and the Minority and Women-Owned Business Program are addressing ideation, startup, and the growth phase. So we spoke and Shayna spoke briefly on the phases, levels of experience that some of our entrepreneurs have. And thankfully, through both of these programs, they are addressing the same, whether it be zero to 10 or 10, 20, however, wherever we want to and with your direction go for entrepreneurs. In the past year, again, as I had mentioned, there have been 10 planned events were created to help educate small businesses on the procurement process, benefits of becoming an SBE or WMBE, and modified software to track both programs, resulting in an increase in participation for both programs. Most importantly, I know you will find the Office of Equal Opportunity loan program and discussion presentation coming up. Very exciting. So I hope that we have addressed just a few highlights of what is being done in the city now and what will be coming forward to you soon. We're going to move to the next steps and questions. So as you heard, we have had a very successful Phase One of the Community Gamification Program. And last year, the city commissioned approved $35,000 for the Economic Development Project supporting entrepreneurs in the city of West Palm Beach. The project created a member gamification program with 1909, a nonprofit dedicated to growth just in startup businesses, providing a shared space in a loft setting that you saw in the photo previously, that encourages ideas, addressing the needs of our community and an opportunity for collaboration, while also providing mentorship opportunities and a safe place, which I think that Shayna had mentioned earlier. Staff is recommending Phase Two of the Gamification Program totaling $70,000 over two years and an inter-local agreement between the city and CRA for funding a $20,000 grant for the 1909 program. I'm now going to turn it over to Chris Ruge to speak from the CRA's perspective. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. I'll be real brief.
Morning.
Good morning. Good to see you.
We'll get it eventually.
I kind of been chomping at the bit because I'm like so excited at all the success that 1909 has. Because I remember when I brought this forward, it was kind of like, are you sure about this? But yeah, I mean, listen, I think it was kind of an entrepreneurial effort all the way around. You know, we, we took the risk and we put forward that cash that really created this great program. And we're seeing the fruits of it now. And so I'm really excited to see what 1909 has moving forward. And the other thing that I do want to mention as well is that this is part of, and Shayna kind of alluded to it in a lot of different ways, as well as all of you, and that, you know, this is one piece of a much bigger pie when it comes to growing businesses and prosperity across our city. When we look at this program, when you combine it with Sticks Promenade, entrepreneurial efforts throughout the city, partnering with our local universities, and really being able to match businesses with brick and mortar or just overall places in our city, and then job creation that then those residents are going to benefit from, you can see how it all starts to tie together and we start achieving our economic development goals. So it's very, very exciting and it's just great to see. But ultimately, the CRA is planning to be part of this. And on behalf of the CRA, we'll be committing or proposing to commit $10,000 each year as part of that 35, 25 coming from the city, 10 years. So CRA is very much a supporting role. That's primarily because 1909 is within the CRA boundaries for the downtown proper. And then the other idea is that we can use this tool to help with those other projects like the Sticks Promenade and other growth, business growth opportunities throughout the downtown and Northwood Village area. So very exciting and hopefully look forward to positive direction to move this forward. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Commissioners.
Questions? Commissioner Shof.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Ruge, I don't know if a question for you, so much as Ms. De La Rosa. When we were looking at the programs through the Office of Equal Opportunity, you know, I think in addressing the program that we have in front of us and moving forward, I would certainly like to be able to dedicate funds going forward, but understanding that the city has limited resources, I'd like to understand from a bigger picture what kind of dedicated resources, funds. So not events and networking opportunities, I think are certainly important, but this same kind of support for our small business community. We've had members of the public come in here that are supportive of the business community that have over 400 businesses at their fingertips in historic Northwest that are not to that tech place, but maybe are good graphic designers, but don't manage their business and need some help with that. So I think I'd like to understand the bigger picture. Again, this is an incredibly important opportunity to, as the mayor puts, you know, make sure that we have that entrepreneurial base. But how are we addressing the spectrum with our limited resources? I think certainly before moving forward, I would like to understand that a little bit more as far as dedicated resources in the same type of way. Again, not a gamification program per se, but a program that helps address uplifting those in our community that are already doing free headshot happy hours, that are really great photographers, but maybe they could benefit from having, you know, someone help program their website, et cetera. So not a conversation for today, but going into the future of looking at how we move forward from the broader business perspective, how are we addressing all of our small business community?
Well, it depends on the needs you're looking for. Are you looking for grants, loans? We certainly have that available. You looking for training? We have those opportunities available. So I don't know, Mr. Fonda, were you about to address some of that? And I know Mr. Hayden's group also has that. So we could provide you, probably not now, but provide you at some point with the whole menu of what the city has available. But it's not just the city. There are other groups out there that can help more established businesses. The difficulty with entrepreneurs is there's really nobody dealing with their particular unique set of needs because they're startups. Not a lot of agencies or nonprofits are looking to work with startups. But for established businesses, there are significant resources, but, and we can get that information to you. But Mr. Fonda, do you want to weigh in?
Armando Fonda, City Administrator, just really quickly, we do have some resources that are dedicated and we'll be coming to very soon on a, the mayor talked about a loan program. And that could be for startups, for small minority businesses, for startups or for existing businesses. So we'll be coming to you with the details within the next month or so on that. And that's about $150,000, which includes the administration of that program. And that's going to be through the Black Chamber of Commerce and the BBIC, who's going to help us with that program, and Valley National Bank.
Thank you. And just to follow up, Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I understand we're concentrating on entrepreneurs here and my comments are also focused on entrepreneurs. For instance, we have a whole group of entrepreneurial restaurateurs. So they're at that level where they're producing really great food. They're managing their business. They're not quite at that brick and mortar place, but they may be able to benefit from some of the resources too. And I guess one of the things that I am asking, a loan program is great. And I think capital is one of the main holdbacks for an entrepreneur. But in this program, we're looking at giving grant money to an organization to help fuel that, that opportunity forward. And that is what I'm asking for, for those businesses that aren't in that tech sector, that aren't, you know, maybe as tech savvy to be able to participate in that kind of online gamification program. What can we do from a programming perspective? And, you know, Mayor, to your point, perhaps there's something that I'm missing in there and just need to be updated. That's the kind of support that I'm looking for. So not, not just loan programs, which again, thank you, I think are fantastic access to capital, but how are we creating this same type of opportunity for the entire spectrum of the entrepreneurial community?
You mean a replication of this gamification model for non-tech companies? Is that what you're getting at?
Some semblance of that, yes, Mayor.
All right. We could look at that. I don't know if we have a specific answer at this point. Now, one thing that did come up is that I liked is that Shayna did mention that the gamification model was scalable. They were looking to take it to other neighborhoods, perhaps even other industries. And maybe that's a conversation that we can have and see if they can come up with a more specific model or even a prototype that could be taken to either another neighborhood or geared toward other types of businesses.
And yeah, we could, something we can explore and I'll look at, I'll look at my boss because I know one of the things that we're going to be also exploring is the budget situation. And so that'll be certainly a huge consideration moving forward on any of these programs.
Thank you. I'm glad I didn't have a heart attack prematurely.
Any other questions, comments? Because we do have one other item on the agenda. Okay. All right. Well, good. Thank you, Ms. De La Rosa. We'll be hearing more about this at the We'll be hearing more about this at the CRA meeting and the City Commission meeting?
Yes.
On May 3rd. Okay. And in the interim, maybe you can have, sit down with Shayna and talk about what a scalable model looks like?
Excellent.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next item is the Banyan Garage update. Mr. Ruge, Ms. Justice?
Good morning, Mayor, City Commissioners.
Good morning.
Chris Ruge, Executive Director of the Community Redevelopment Agency. Here with Allison Justice, Deputy Director. This is us, right? Right, Allison? Okay. Okay, we have 30 minutes. Okay, so we'll try to get through this relatively quickly. Really, today is a very exciting step, I think, in a project that has been long-desired to move forward. When we talk about, this says Banyan Hub, and what we're talking about today is essentially the Banyan Garage, which is located on the corner of Banyan Boulevard and Olive Avenue. Yes, between, anyways, we'll show you a map here in a second. But I want to preference this with, it's becoming, there isn't a week that goes by where I don't get a call from an interested developer that is, that would like to partner with the city on this project. It's widely known in the private sector right now that this project is interested to be approached as a public-private partnership. And luckily, you know, the interest is very much out there through several developers where we've actually started a list of interested parties that are interested in working with us. And that's a really good sign. And I think because of that, City Administration has said, let's accelerate and try to get, and sort of strike while the iron's hot, while the industry is really apt to do this for us. So that's really good news. So we're just going to go over a real brief history today about the Banyan Garage, and Allison will discuss that and the definitions, and just to give you sort of a general, a general understanding of three P3s. And then ultimately, I'm going to talk about some of the aims of what we're trying to do with this public-private partnership for the Banyan Garage. And then if I could walk away with one thing, it's just direction essentially to kick off the effort to get the process started. So this is almost like a pre-start to the start. It's really just to, if we could do nothing more this year than to just start the selection process of that partner, I think we're in really good shape. So that's what we're here to ask you for today, and then obviously, we'll go through those steps and then happy to answer any questions. Great. Allison?
Thank you, Chris. Good morning, Mayor Commissioners.
Good morning.
I wanted to get in on the good morning game.
I got it worked. I don't know why everybody doesn't jump on it with me. Good morning.
So I wanted to start this by giving a little bit of history of the Banyan Garage, kind of where we've been in the process. This isn't, this isn't a new conversation, and for those of you that have been on the Commission, you've been a part of this conversation in the past, and really kind of, kind of get the blessing of this Commission to move forward in a process with developing a partner for this site. The parking garage on 200 Banyan Boulevard was built in 1979. Really, the current challenges with it are, it is nearing the end of its life. If you've all been in the Banyan Garage, it is an aged facility within the city, which leads to inefficient operations. They can't upgrade the technology, that it is a space that is basically on our waterfront, that's very valuable real estate as well, so there's some opportunities there for the We started discussing this back in 2015. We did a needs assessment back then, so we discussed this with parking, community events, everyone that utilizes this space on what they would like to see within the city if this project were to be redeveloped. Again, if you were, if you were on the board, we did have a competition back in 2016 for the waterfront and for this facility. We created a schematic design, and really, the purpose of that was to, to develop what the needs of the city are. What kind of uses would we like to see in there based on our needs assessment? And what would the private sector need to see as part of a partnership with a P3 with the city? So again, we've been discussing with developers, as Chris mentioned, we'd get calls a lot on this. We've also had discussions with the YMCA that's been interested. So there's a lot of parties that have been interested in this facility, and we believe it's time to move this project forward. A little bit of background on public-private partnerships, this is just a textbook definition. There's a lot of variations of definitions of public-private partnerships, and there's a lot of different examples of what that can mean. And really, it's going to be a contract between this public agency and a private sector entity to do something that public, that benefits the public. So we're going to be asking for, for instance, in this facility, parking that would benefit the public or a public open space, and that will be part of the negotiations with somebody that, that may be developing this property. It can go from the minimum of, it's public design and they just build and bid on it, up to we can have someone finance it, operate and maintain it, and that the city would pay them back over the years for the public uses. So there's, there's a wide range of activities that can happen within public-private partnerships. Some examples, you know, this city has been involved in public-private partnerships to a different level. Old City Hall, again, this was a CRA and city-owned property. We sold one of the properties, we leased one of the properties, and in return, there was some incentives to the developer to provide public benefit. At that time, we were in need of the hotel, we would like, we were interested in the waterfront restaurant. So those were the, those were the public benefits in return for some incentives to the developer on that. Again, we've been working on the tent site, which was CRA-owned property, as well as the anchor site. I'm going to turn it back over to Chris, but we believe that the P3 with the Banyan Hub is going to probably be structured a little bit different than those. It is city property, but we do want some pretty significant public benefit out of it, namely parking, storage, there's, you know, we want to require some mixed uses, perhaps some public space in it. And we will ask the private sector likely to finance this project, potentially operate and maintain this project. We have not, we haven't come to that decision yet, but that's something for this board to discuss, the different options for what a developer would do in this. So I'm going to turn that with that. Back over to Chris.
So the purpose of this is essentially just to give you a very high-level, basic idea of what we're trying to achieve with this project. Obviously, you, this board has made it very clear, we want to use private sector financing to make this project a reality, using that P3 model. But it's pretty safe to say that we'll have, we'll replace the parking nets there. 396 spaces currently exist in that parking garage. It provides vital storage for a variety of things around our downtown as it relates to Green Market, Clematis by Night, you know, maybe even some traffic things, stuff like that. And then ultimately, there'll probably be some varied mix of uses as we redevelop the project, because you will need, in order to maximize a hub vision, you'll have a different or a variety of uses. I think that's where the private sector really comes in, and we work with them to determine what those uses are. But ultimately, you'll have several ways to finance the project over time, where you have these different various revenue sources. The, a real basic way to look at it is usage fees, that's just somebody that comes in, parks, or something like that, maybe pays rent. Or, you know, there's demand payments, which is actually just an annual contribution by the public entity, but there's a variety of ways that you could use those revenue sources. Obviously, what we want to do is lean more towards the usage fee side, because that's not money that really comes out of the city coffers. So in order to kick off this process, and Allison actually came up with a really great idea, which is sort of this two-prong approach that I agree with and I think is a really good way to move forward with it. Obviously, we'll need to work out, you know, the timeline and processes for everything, but just to give you an idea of where staff's head is at, is that first, we would want to identify the qualified partner. Look at that resume and understand that a partner has the experience, has the financial capability, because if we're looking at a bona fide public-private partnership, this is a company or individual or group of individuals that is going to be a long-term partner with the city. So we want to make sure that they have the experience and expertise to see the project through. And then secondly, of that small group of qualified partners that the CRA, or I'm sorry, that the City Commission and CRA both feel comfortable with, is then we would want to know, okay, well then what is your vision for the site that matches with those goals and ideas that are also important for the city and provide that public benefit? And we can do that through a variety of ways, and actually, perhaps even include some type of vetting group as well, that is, in addition to the selection committee, to say, okay, this is something that we like and that we think is going to be a good addition to our downtown. So understanding if, what we would want to kick off this year, and you generally have an idea of where staff's head is at, in order to move this forward, there are a variety of steps that we need to take. Number one is sort of establishing the project with the CRA. The Banyan Garage is a city asset, so there does need to be a formal step that the City Commission says, okay, CRA, you know, we're comfortable with you taking the lead on this project, and we would do that. That needs assessment, we'll just, you know, circulate that around staff again to make sure that it is up to speed and everybody understands, okay, this is what they would like to see, and develop that wish list that would really help us express to the private sector what we're hoping, or what we would like to see if we could wave a magic wand. And then also sharing some, I think, financial information that is also going to be critical to helping the private sector understand, okay, this is how we can make that project work. Again, still working internally, determining that selection process, that's something we want to be very clear with procurement on to make sure, because there's a variety of different processes that we have to abide by according to state statute. And then obviously, bringing all of that back together, sharing it with you all, then drafting those solicitation documents before they go out, and then outlining that timeline, and then ultimately putting it out on the street. If we could do that this year, I would be ecstatic. This project is located in downtown. The recommendation today is basically to initiate, kick this off, and hopefully bring it back with more exciting, just steps and actions and clarity on how the project will move forward, but ultimately, to begin the steps needed to select that partner. So thank you all very much. Really appreciate the time.
Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Cho.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation today. My only question, and I think you've outlined a good process to move forward, in that vetting of qualified partners, would you establish a criteria according to bonding capability, previous performance? There would be a set criteria, and then it would move forward based upon those criteria that were based?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so is there consensus to kind of have CRA moving in the direction outlined? Any objections? It looks like a lot of nodding heads. Okay. So you have consensus to proceed, sir.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate it, Mayor Commissioners.
Very good. Commissioners, I don't have any, anything under Mayor's matters. Does anyone have anything for the good of the body? Commissioner Cho.
Thank you. Just one thing, as we were talking about economic development today, the SBA, the Small Business Administration, is rolling out and continuing some programs that are really important to our small business community. The first being the restaurant grant opportunities, and I believe there is a webinar that will walk our small businesses through the ins and outs of that program. But also is the shuttered venue grant program, which allows for theaters and more performing arts-type centers to apply for funding, and all of that information can be found at sba.gov. That's all. Thank you.
Anything else? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. I just saw the press release that went out on Friday about the vaccines and that we were able to take walk-ups for the first dose of vaccines, and I was just curious if we could get an update on the city's outreach for making sure that everyone had an opportunity to get a vaccine if they wanted one. It doesn't have to be here and now, but just if we could get an update on that.
Yeah, we will get you that data. I think we've had, we got some pretty detailed data and some metrics on how many people, how many doors you knocked on, calls you made, et cetera. So we'll get that information.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? I'm sure you all saw that our Green Market made number one. Yay. And I had occasion to go out there last Saturday for the final event of the year, and it was very well-attended. And when does that start up again? August, September, October?
Yeah, usually October.
October? Okay, very good. Okay, well, that will take your little journey this meeting, and thank you all very much.